Go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Russell, if you could please call the roll.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll actually wait to this. There we go. Okay, we're good.
Okay. Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Wright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Allbritton.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, let's, thank you. Let's do the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Marty, Marty, we're, I think we're able to hear you speak. So could you please come? Thank you. Okay, um, all right, let's begin with public comment.
Hey Mayor, we have at least two public speakers right now. The first one appears to be Noel Hollingsworth. Great. Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I spoke to Andy this morning because our garbage was not picked up again yesterday. Recycle and both garbage. And that I've been keeping tabs on it since the first of the year and there's been 28 pickups since then. And 11 of the times they have not either picked up recycle, garbage, or bulk, or all three on the proper day. That's 40% error rate. My question to the council is, when are the fines going to start? And my next thing is, I asked Andy as a member of the Conference of Plan Advisory Board to poll all of the council members as to the nursery ordinance to what those areas they would not be willing to vote for. And we would delete those and send it on to the board, to the council. I received no replies whatsoever. I'm very disappointed in the council. When information is asked, I would request and requested in a proper manner for you to reply. And that is all I'm saying, have to say for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Noel.
Okay, the next speaker, Mayor, is George Kalis. Mr. Kalis, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can, George. Good evening.
All right, good evening. George Kalis, 6721 Hancock Road. I know you're tired of hearing from me, but this is in reference to the dump next door to me. I thought at this point we might reiterate, looking back and kind of bring everyone up to date how this came about. So I'm gonna try to do that. Incidentally, July 10th of 2020, I sent every council member a pretty long letter. And I never heard from anyone, but in any event, back in August, my neighbor got his bought property and immediately moved in three shipping containers in a big box truck. I complained to call enforcement. They removed the two containers and the box truck. One remained because it was allowed, if it were under 40 foot. The, the container was 50 foot. I complained, nothing was done. Just after that came 100 truckloads of raw manure. And this is by his own admission. I have it on the letter. My wife could not breathe. She could not go out for a couple of months. And then when code enforcement stopped that, then came the chemicals. After the chemicals, January of 2019, he applied for an egg exemption to the tax assessor's office. But they denied it because of his lies. I have proof of that as well on, on paper, on, in a letter. But with the help of Mary Gay Chapels, she showed him the way to the value adjustment board. During one of the meetings out in the office, I begged Mary Gay to back off of it. But she would not back off. And she had the audacity to tell my wife that we were against it because he was colored. The, after the value adjustment, the value adjustment granted him his egg exemption. But with the help of Lori Parrish and Bob Parker, we met with Mr. Ketchatori on the property. He did not like what he saw. And he started the lawsuit from the tax assessor's office to the value adjustment board. And trying to withdraw his egg exemption. Right after that came the COVID. And that slowed the legal process down. So they could not, they did not withdraw the license. When we spoke to Mr. Ketchatori, he advised us that everything was still in limbo. So, and the lawsuit was dropped because of lack of evidence. Now, we spoke to Mrs. Gilbert just a week ago. And what she said was that they cannot take away his egg exemption because he has some banana trees there. But the amount of dumping can be controlled by the town council. So maybe you guys could look into that. Keith, maybe you could look into it. But if, I know my time's up, but my wife, be so kind as to let my wife say a few words, please. I guess it's okay.
Yeah, it's okay. Just for these.
I know he's got his egg exemption now. My question is because you're talking about limits on dump trucks coming in and bringing fill. How much can he bring in to raise the elevation that he's claiming is mulch? I mean, right now, I think he's got as much in there as I have for my house pad on my property. There should be a limit, I would think, even though he's got an egg exemption. He's saying it's mulch, but mulch is fill. So I would really appreciate if you could look at it in that aspect for us. Because it's getting, really, he's going to be filling the whole property. Whereas when you build a home, you only have to build a pad for where your house is going to be sitting or your barn. I think you've got some issues there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor, we have, I think that's it for regular public speak, but we, we do have three people that want to present related to the 5K. We have Pava Paul McCarr, Parneet Singh, and Japit Paul McCarr. And they wanted to talk to you all about the, the 5K.
Excellent. Great.
Russell, real quick, so is public session over?
Yes.
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Japit Paul Singh.
I am Pava Paul Singh.
And I am Parneet Singh. On behalf of the Sikh Youth Association, we thank you for your time.
Sikh Youth Association, in partnership with the Town of Southwest Ranches, is organizing the third annual Race for Unity Endeavor virtual 5K run slash wall. Keeping healthy, keeping health and safety protocols in mind this year. Event will be brought to you virtually. This online event will take place from April 24, 2021 to May 9, 2021. The goal of this event is to empower the youth to become active members in their communities as well as to foster an understanding of people from all walks of life. The proceeds from this 5K run slash wall will go to benefit the Town of Southwest Ranches College Scholarship Fund, which provides financial aid to students entering college. We encourage everyone to invite their family and friends to support this cause, all while promoting a healthy and active lifestyle.
In order to register as a runner or donate to our cause, scan the QR code shown on the race flyer and it will direct you to the registration website. In order to scan the QR code, open the camera app on your smartphone and point the camera towards the QR code. Then you can click on the link. Be sure to post the registration link on any social media sites or community bulletins so that we can get as many people as possible to join us on our mission. Make sure that you register your family, friends, and coworkers. Through the virtual platform, you can even invite family and friends living out of state or in a different country. So go out there and spread the word.
This year's 5K will be held virtually through the Racejoy app. Here's how a virtual 5K works. First, go to the App Store or Google Play on your smartphone and download the Racejoy app. Next, click on featured races or go to the search bar in order to find our race. Finally, follow the prompts to set up your phone for race day and click, I want to be tracked. That's it. Now you're ready to go. The virtual 5K event will last two weeks from April 24th to May 9. You can pick any day in those two weeks to run your race. Just before you start running, make sure you click the green button to turn on tracking and select the course you will run. It is recommended to turn off your Wi-Fi before you start running. Make sure you pick a safe place to run and make sure that you are actually moving so that the GPS can track you. That means that you can choose to run in a park or around the neighborhood, but you cannot run on your treadmill. While running, have your phone with you at all times so you can track how far along your friends are, send them a shout out, and even receive personalized tracking alerts. The app will let you know when you have completed the 5K and you can check out the automated virtual results after you finish running. If you would like to review this information again, scan the QR code on the flyer and our registration website has a step-by-step manual on how to use Racejoy. All registrants also receive an email and instructions email following the completion of their registration. You can also email us at ssof youth at gmail dot com for more information.
We would also like to gladly inform you that we will be holding a fundraiser at the Chipotle on Pines Boulevard on Saturday, April 24th from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. When placing your order, make sure to show the cashier the flyer on your smartphone or you could tell the cashier you are supporting our cause. This will ensure that a third of our, of the proceeds from your meal will go to the Sikh Youth Association. So once again, please mark your calendars for Saturday, April 24th from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM and join us at the Chipotle on Pines Boulevard to show your support for unity and diversity.
Thank you for giving us this time to share this with you all. As a reminder, the virtual 5K event will be held from April 24th to May 9. And we encourage you to register yourselves, your family, and your friends.
Also, we hope you will join us at our Chipotle fundraiser on Sunday, April 24th. Today, more than ever, it is important that we show that there is more that brings us together than what drives us apart. And we want you to be part of our mission. Thank you, everyone.
Fantastic. Thank you all. Really appreciate, even in a tough year like this, still, you know, coming through and organizing it and getting it all to happen. So we really appreciate that. Thanks for all the work. And certainly goes to a great cause and I would encourage all our residents to get involved. Even if you haven't run in the past, we certainly have learned in the past that you don't have to be a runner to participate. You just have to be a mover. Maybe running, maybe walking, seen a couple of people crawling, but you know, just moving a little bit, that works. So I just encourage everybody to, to join in. Thank you. All right, awesome. Let's see, board reports. Do we have any board reports this evening?
Yes, it looks like we have a board report from Jason Hallberg and George Morris. We'll start with Mr. Hallberg. Mr. Hallberg, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. You can hear me as well?
Yes, we can. Hey, Jason.
Perfect. Yeah, good evening, everyone. Yeah, Jason Hallberg, Chair of the Com Board. I don't have any new updates at the moment, but I just wanted to bring up one thought. So during the last council meeting, there were some discussions you guys had on potentially adding a new person to our board, which I think is a great idea. With that said, my thought is, is that for the purposes of our agenda, I'll work with Emily, who's our town liaison, to adjust if needed our agenda for the upcoming meeting to push the nursery ordinance further into the future if you guys need more time. In other words, you know, I know that it sounds like that's going to be a discussion item for this evening. So if you're able to come to some sort of conclusion and there's, you know, you know, again, a consensus on that, happy to keep it on our agenda. Otherwise, you know, I can try to give the council more time to work through that. So again, just want to make sure you understand I'm willing to, you know, we, I think it's an important thing and I just want to make sure that, you know, we give you guys time to, you know, get where you need to be. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate that.
Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is George Morris. Mr. Morris, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening, Council Mayor, Vice Mayor. George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. We had a meeting last night, very productive meeting in regards to discussion of penalties for fill, particularly without a permit. Some of the bulletins, bullet points that we came up with were basically, you know, things reported to the council that included posting signs. When, when someone gets a permit, we want to make it obvious that that person has a fill permit to be placed in front of the property. That way neighbors and other people know that it's a fill permit, as well as posting it on the town website. There's a link to the fill permits on the town website. This is a positive thing. Also, we discussed making a level one fill permit more affordable with the potential of working with DEP and reducing the fees. Oh, we also made a recommendation for possibly increasing the fines in regards to filling without a permit. And that pertains to level two and level three. We also discussed 188, our paving of 188, a long awaited project. It looks like it's coming to an end. They're in the middle of striping the street now. You know, they were able to upgrade to an inch and a half overlay versus a thinner overlayment. Myself have gone down that street. I'm sure many residents and it's a pleasure to open down that street now. The speed bumps are all been redone. And again, as I said, they're, they're marking the streets with the dividers and all of the stops, etc. So very productive meeting we had last night. Other than that, that's pretty much it to sum it up.
Thank you, George. All right, seeing no additional board reports, council member comments.
I'll go.
All right. Hey, Gary.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming. A few things to go over. The Sikh Youth Association's already talked about their 5K run. I already signed up. I was gonna ask them a question, but they, they signed off too fast. I was wondering how many people have signed up already. But that can wait. April 17th, we've got virtual bingo. It's a Saturday for the Education Advisory Board. I believe there's information on the website for that. On the 13th of July, we have scheduled a barn photo shoot. It'll be an aerial photo shoot of all first responders, retired and active, at 5:00 PM at the Rolling Oaks Barn. There will be social distancing, you know, all the, all the protocols will be in place. And we love to see all our towns' first responders and our volunteer fire department and Davie Fire Department and police there. And luckily, we've got, you know, we've got one of the world's best photographers, Bob, who's got a 400-foot camera, who's gonna take a picture of it and several shots. And Bob, thank you for your time and your effort because, believe me, as a, as a amateur photographer, I know what goes into that, so I can just imagine what you're, what you, you know, your preparation is like unbelievable. So I'm glad for that. Just a couple of other items here. One is the Broward County Property Appraisers Office has a, a system where you can register your property and they will email you if there is any activity other than you who might be trying to sell their, sell your property off without your knowledge or get a loan out on it or things of that nature that have been involved with property appraisers office. I tried signing up today. I found out, and by the way, I got a lot of this information from Jason Hallberg, so I want to say thank you, Jason. I appreciate it. You need to have some documents ready, which I did not have for the property appraiser. And basically what you need to do is have a copy of your, your FPL bill will be sufficient because they want to upload it and let you know who you are. So I've got to scan that and redo that little minor portion of it. But other than that, it's pretty easy to do. It's right on the front page. You just go to BCA, bcpa.com and you're, you're in. And Marty Care's office, he's made it pretty seamless, but I wasn't aware of the documentation that you have to scan with it. Then the other thing I went into is for the post office for the email where they will send you an email every day of what's supposed to be coming in your, in your mailbox. That was a little more difficult. There's a lot of questions, not a lot. There's a few questions that are gonna, they're gonna ask you, you know, mother's maiden name, third sister-in-law, your father's fourth side, you know, something only you would know. And then, then they had a really slick option where they said you, to verify your address, do you want to do it over online or you want to do it via, I forgot how they, how they would phrase it. But basically, they're gonna, they're gonna send you something in the mail that's got a code on it and you gotta send it back and sign in with your name to prove who you are. Well, I clicked on the wrong thing, so I gotta wait a few days for that, for everything to come in. But it, it works. It'll, you know, I'll get there. Hopefully by next meeting, I'll say it all works. But it, it's a work in progress for me, but it, it's a good thing to do. Okay? Like I told everybody the other night, somehow the wind mysteriously pushed a very, it wasn't large. It was just large enough, stick in my slot of my locked mailbox. I can't, I can't help but figure out Mother Nature wants to help me pay my bills or something, but it, it looked a little suspicious to me. So I took the stick out and, and I've been keeping a careful eye on it. Fortunately, I have a lot of cameras where I live, so one's in that general direction on that. And now the last thing I'd like to talk about, and this is kind of the moment you've all been waiting for all night, I can tell. You all got an email this morning that dealt with the Park Board, the Parks, Parks Department, the Pro's Department. I asked Andy, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on it, and then I'm gonna ask December to come on. If, Russell, if you could arrange that while I'm kind of doing the preamble here. What I did was I asked Andy and December to come up with some projects that December is having a very difficult time getting funding for. And these are projects that were being, they've probably been in like two to four budget cycles and keep getting kicked on down the road because we don't, we don't have the money for it or we're not going to allocate the money for it. Well, we have some money, some extra money, as you guys know from the last meeting when I did the cameras. Well, we still have, you know, a fairly sized, sizable chunk of money left over, close to $300,000. And so I asked Andy and December to come up, and I used $100,000 as a round figure. If you could put together a list of some projects that are the really, really difficult ones to put on there and that we keep, that we keep kicking down the road. And I had Andy send you guys all out the, the list of the projects. They total 111,307. They involve the playgrounds at the Country Estates Park and the playground at the Equestrian Park, the Rolling Oaks Wetlands, and the Country Estates signs at the Top Park and the ball field that we've all wanted to make less rocky. And is December, December on the line? Thank you. Thank you, Russell, for screen sharing on that. December, are you there? Russell, is December available? She is. Let me, well, I'm not sure if she is, but if she is, she's.
She's on as an attendee, Russell.
We got her now. She's there now.
Hi, guys. Hello.
Thank you, December. Okay, December, for those of you that don't know, is our Parks Director. And, and she does so much more, so it's not just, just that. She's, she carries, carries a big stick and drives a pickup truck. So she's, she's really instrumental in maintaining all of our parks and our roadway, some of our roadways and things of that nature, and our linear parks, which most people don't know that we have throughout the town. And December, I was wondering if you could give the council a brief synopsis of these five projects for, and Mayor, if you'll indulge me on this, I would appreciate it. December, can I turn the floor over to you for a few minutes?
Happy to. Thank you very much, Councilmember Jablonsky and, and everybody for being, being interested in hearing about this. The five projects that I recommended as the councilman correctly stated have been in our list of wish lists, basically every budget season for a number of years. And they include upgrades to certain pieces of the Equestrian Park Playground Equipment, which, as you guys will remember, we opened that playground in 2006. It was completed in 2005 at the end of the construction of the Equestrian Park. So those components have been really holding up very well, but they could use a facelift. And some of the, some of the components could use more than a facelift. They're not a safety issue at this point, but I'd like to keep that playground in good shape. So I picked out the worst of the, of the things to do out there and got some pricing on it to, to see how, how much it could be and how we could possibly try to fit that in. And new shade fabric over the play structures, various pieces of hardware for swing sets. The roof on the five to 12 structure and the barn panels on the five to 12 structure all could use some work. And then on the two to five structure, the little tractor, the sound chimes panel and the talk tubing for the, for the little flowers. All these things need to be upgraded. Then moving on to, oh, and, and all of that comes at a price of about $32,032.125. Moving on to the, let me see, I'm doing this in order, the Rolling Oaks Passive Open Space Park Fitness Trail Upgrade. This is, again, this is about components that have been in use since 2010. There are a couple of benches for sit-ups and other kinds of exercises against resistance of body weight that, over the years, have gotten damaged. There's a little rust here and there that I'd like to just replace those benches. And to do a real good job painting the signposts and replacing the faces of signs so that they're more legible. Those have been in the ground now for a number of years. And I put about $9,500 in my wish list for that project. The Country Estates Park Ball Field Improvement is really needed if that ball field is to function like a ball field. It's, it's a, I mean, we all know, we've talked about it before. It's a, it's a lot rocky for anybody to play and tumble. You'll wind up with scraped knees. It's, and, and what, what the town engineer has helped me to figure out won't turn it into a, you know, perfect regulation play ball field, but it will help to get some of the rocks out and to improve the surfacing, including, you know, a better, thicker application of seed. And we looked at different options for that. I'm looking away because I have my notes here. The, the options that we looked at were either to put a two- or three-inch layer of fill on top of what's existing and to then reseed. And if we were putting sod down, we did look at the cost of putting down sod, but it's just cost prohibitive. I could spend the entire $104,000 to sod that field and then we'd have to install irrigation systems to get it going. So seeding worked pretty well. And if we've got a softer base on that, then it should be a lot more playable, according to the person who's really an expert about that, and that's our town engineer, Rodley. And then going back to the Rolling Oaks Park and an improvement that we, the last improvement that we were to make, this property, as you may recall, was spent some money from the state and some money from the county in order to purchase this. And it was our first acquisition. uh, in order to purchase this. And it was our first acquisition in two thousand and one. And, uh, we, we were very conservative when we said what we were going to do out there in response to the community's wishes. Uh, but one of the things that we said we would do would be improve the wetlands. And, um, some of the folks that have been taking care of the property by contract or subcontract have commented about ways that, that this could really stand to be improved and it would improve drainage. Um, what happens if you don't take care of a wetlands, which is what was the case when we purchased the property? It was in the process of vegetative succession. First you get a lot of weeds and when the weeds fill up the water area, it almost becomes like muck and, and sludge. And then it, it fills in over time. It becomes something you could even walk across with very little deep water. Um, so the drainage is sort of stunted there. It's like a great big sponge just sitting there wet all the time. And when it's really wet, it doesn't help to drain water off of the grassy area, um, that's around it. Um, so we've looked at a lot of different ways of cleaning that out, but the, um, proposals that I received, I think it was probably back in twenty, I'm gonna say twenty seventeen, were, um, to mechanically move, remove, um, a lot of the stuff that's in there, scoop it out with mechanical means while trying to retain what's, what's been planted and what's native. Um, the trees along the edge that we planted with volunteers back in twenty-ten and twenty-eleven are thriving. So we want to retain what's, what's native. Um, so we budgeted about, um, thirty-three thousand for that project, thirty-three, nine, twenty. And then, um, excuse me, the, the final thing that I put on there is a really tiny little project, but the Country Estates Fishing Hole Park Playground, um, has educational features that are signs that go with the theme of the, of the nature wildlife, um, theme of the playground elements. And the signs could use to be replaced and, and made fresh again. So I just quickly costed out what it would take to do a couple of those signs and get them, you know, back in tip-top shape. Um, again, there's no, uh, safety issue there, but it is just a way of keeping things from looking old and worn out. Taking care, making sure that the community knows how much we love it and how much we know they love their park. So those are the items that I had on my wishlist.
Thank you. Thank you, December, very much for explaining all that to the council. I walk, uh, I, I walk the parks now at least once a week, each park, uh, even some of them that are not on this list. And, uh, we really, really need to do these upgrades, I feel. Uh, this is coming, will be coming before us. These projects will be coming before us in the new budget season. I know David and, uh, Councilman Kazinsky and Councilman Albritton, you haven't been part of the, uh, budget, uh, uh, season before. So it's gonna be a little bit new to you, but, um, the rest of, the rest of us have, have gone through this. And you know how quickly things get discarded if we can push them off until another time because we can't make this or we can't make that. Well, here's a real opportunity, I think, to, uh, these are sorely needed. And, um, we've, on most of these, we've kicked the can down the road too many times, and I don't think we can do it anymore. Um, the parks I go to, I, I think December downplayed the safety aspect a little bit. Um, I think they're, you know, our parks are gonna be reopening here soon, as soon as we get the, uh, you know, whatever the go-ahead is from, uh, you know, herd immunity and vaccinations, all of that. And I'd like to get the parks, uh, just brought up to when they, when we open them. Um, this isn't anything new that we're trying to do. These are, these are repairs and, uh, making them safe. Um, I, I, I really think there's some areas in there where there, there may be a safety concern. Uh, December sees the parks more than I do, but I, I just, uh, I, I'm just not comfortable with split rail fencing and, and a pole sticking straight up with nothing on it, that somebody could impale themselves. Now, the, the, the top lots are closed, but you know, kids being kids will still get through them and stuff like that. Um, so this is all stuff that would come before us in a, in, uh, the new budget cycle. And so this, what I'm doing here right now serves actually two purposes. A, it gets things done. And B, it's going to be a budget tax reduction to the residents because they, it won't be in the next year's budget, which is what, uh, where, where this is all ultimately goes. And then we decide whether or not we are going to do it. And I asked her, I asked December to give me the, the, you know, the, the projects that she feels need to be done. Um, that we can, she called it her wishlist, but I, I call it the unnecessary list. Uh, you know, for lack of a better way of saying it. Um, so, uh, this is something I, I, I feel strongly that we need to do. It's across town. It's, uh, we have the money, we have the funds, there's no cost to the residents. Our, our legal team got us a, a, a really good windfall. I mean, they pay for themselves. Every year you can't, I can't say that enough. Uh, they do a great job with that. And because of that, we're able to tackle some of these attributes of the park that need to be done. Like the wetlands in Rolling Oaks, that's like the last thing that had to be done for our grant requirement. Um, the playground upgrade at the Equestrian Park, that's really big because that is huge, so much. And then the, uh, uh, the playground at, uh, uh, Country Estates Park, that is used continuously when the park is open. Once we reopen the bathroom, once we, you know, we're, we're getting the buildings painted, we're getting everything pressure cleaned. Um, and I can't, uh, I can't emphasize this enough, this is at no cost to the town to get this stuff done finally. So I would, based on all of that, and you've all had the information here for, uh, the day, which gives you all the backup and, and the whatnot. Um, I would like to make a motion that, that we, uh, give the Parks Department the go-ahead for this. And gentlemen, I'd really appreciate a second.
I second it.
Thank you, sir.
Gary, I'll just say a couple of things. Um, I, I really appreciate, um, you know, the effort that you're going through to not, you know, not, not only to, you know, to do things that, uh, make good use of this, this funding, but I think the way that you are picking the projects and the elements, both last meeting and this meeting, are elements that will be seen and enjoyed and benefited by residents across the town. Um, and, and I think that's the way it should be. You know, we have to spend money on a lot of things that, um, that's just part of doing business that a lot of residents don't see. But the great thing about these things that you've picked out is that, um, benefits residents day in, day out. And so I certainly support what you're doing. Uh, I think these are great projects. I like the way they're across town. So everybody across town can benefit from it. Um, and they are projects that, uh, you know, I remember these from back when I was on the council before. So they've been kicked down the road, I know, a long time. So, um, great job. I definitely support this.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that very, very much. Do anybody else have any comments or suggestions or they want to put more on it?
Yeah, yeah, Bob.
Yeah, speaking of more on it, um, you know, since I've been using that park to practice on a little bit, it became really obvious that, uh, the ball field at, uh, Country Estates Park is, um, subject to donuts all the time. If you look at it, it is, uh, it's got donuts that go back for years and it's got fresh ones. And I'm concerned that, you know, we spend a pretty reasonable chunk of money there and, uh, within a few weeks, it'll be torn up. Um, we talked a while ago about possibly putting some more fence across to try to, I think we were focusing mostly on the area around the, um, the pavilion and the bathrooms there, but maybe this is a time where we go across with fencing and, you know, make the necessary accommodation for horses and things like that, like we do elsewhere. But I'm worried that a, you know, a, an excellent project that needs to be done will just be butchered uh, by whoever chooses to do that. I don't know who does it, but, uh, it happens. So just some thoughts. I know that, um, over at Circle S there, they've got a ton of white fence, the PVC fence around. Maybe we can get a deal.
That's a good point. Those are good points, special mayor. Um, I, I too, when I go there, I see what you're talking about and I walk along. And, uh, I've also noticed too, when I go over by the dam structure or the rear lock, whatever it is that's right there, um, that gate is always open when I'm there. Uh, and I got a funny feeling ATVs might be getting in through the, uh, east side as opposed to the, uh, and, and that's, and I think that's a water management lock. Uh, so I mean, a software drainage, uh, uh, gate or locks that goes there. But I always notice that that, that's been open every time I go through there. So we may be able to have some, a little more control on that. But I'm all for doing the fencing and, you know, whatever's required. I know we've got the barbed wire chain link fencing along the, uh, west side. Uh, you know, that needs to be replaced and I had some fencing across the rear. But the real, but you know, but a car can drive in, which means an ATV can drive in also, you know. So I don't know if we need to someday put cameras there, you know, I, it, I, I don't have the answer. I do have possible answers, like, you know, camera systems and things of that nature, if we want to, if we want to go to that extent. But, um, I, I'd like to, you know, get the ball field completed so that it, it's not a, uh, you know, something where the kids are gonna scrape their knees every five minutes playing, kicking a soccer ball, you know, or, or anything like that.
I don't see too many kids out there, uh, on the ball field. It's, it's, it's.
Probably why. Well, we, we, we do have that, we do have the COVID situation and, and a lot of people are, you know, apprehensive, uh, about parks, you know, for that.
But Gary, uh, that, the gate that's on the east side, I believe the guy who, uh, opens and closes the parks locks that every night as well, because I've seen it lock plenty of times in the evenings.
Okay. I'm not there. I'm not there at dark.
Yeah. That was my only comment.
Very good. David, Jim, any, any thoughts on that?
I think there are wonderful ideas.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thanks for all the work there. They're really nice. Thank you.
You, sir.
And December.
All right. Thank you.
December and Andy.
Everybody involved. Thank you.
Great. All right. Um, before we vote on this, I'd, uh, I'd like to open it up to the public, get their, uh, their thoughts and feedback that they might have on this as well.
And Mayor, it looks like we have one hand raised, uh, Suzy Elshire.
Right.
Elshire.
Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm not understanding why the parks are not open to the children right now when throughout Broward County, there are other areas where the parks are open. And we have a wonderful playground for children to be able to use that is blocked.
Okay, good question.
What is the plan?
Great. Thank you, Suzy. Will, um, I don't know if there's any, it doesn't look like there's any other, um, public comment on this. Um, Andy, I don't know if you want to, uh, talk about that. I know that's a policy that, uh, we have in place.
Yeah, we are. It, it's been COVID related and, uh, there, there are some facilities that are open throughout the county. There are many that remain closed. I think we're all working towards reopening. I think that's getting very, very close. So, uh, yeah, while I appreciate the question, uh, we do expect to have it open, uh, in, in the very near future.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah, I think, Suzy, I think the, uh, um, overall, um, the town has leaned on the more cautious side, which, you know, um, makes sense. Um, it is frustrating sometimes, but it makes sense in the long run. People's health is, is primary. So. But I do feel like we're getting very close to the date. I know Andy and I, we talk about it on a regular basis because it frustrates me as well. So, um, and I know Andy is putting a lot of time and effort into doing a very, uh, controlled and, uh, based on the factual out, so.
The, the only thing I'll add to that, Mayor, is there are some larger municipalities that have been able to do some things. And we just, quite honestly, just don't have the resources. And we don't have park rangers to go out there and to wake things down more frequently. So, uh, as you said, it's, it's been an abundance of caution, but we do expect to be open shortly.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other comment, uh, Russell, if you could please call the roll on this.
Certainly, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Albritton? Yes. Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes.
The bike crews?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I really, really appreciate it. Ready to see what I have next meeting.
Right, getting expensive.
And I'll, I know, it's actually very, very cost effective. And I'll close, and I'll close with that. Okay.
Great, thank you. All right, who'd like to go next?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real short, uh, Mr. Mayor, council and, uh, staff, uh, everybody attending. I'd like to send a special thank you to the police department, our police department that work here with us, Davey. Uh, we had a burglary recently in my neighborhood, just a few doors down. And within about three, three and a half days, they, uh, department worked and worked and worked. They had that person, uh, in jail. And they're gonna send him back up, I guess, to Marion County or somewhere else. He's got a bunch of outstanding warrants. But this is how quickly, i- if they can get the lead or if somebody can see something, this gentleman had cameras, so it really helped. But they actually got him. So I think if the word gets out, that if you come into Southwest Ranches and with the cameras that are proposed and the readers, uh, in the future, and with the people's, uh, ring cameras and stuff, I think the word might get out to the criminals that way. But I'd like to say thank you so much to the department for their hard work, you know. And everything so far has been returned to the owner, uh, you know, so he wasn't out anything. So thank you much.
Great, thank you, Jim. Yeah, David.
All right, um, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, just wanna follow up with one of the projects uh, that the Arts Board has been working on and, um, I've been working on with the Arts Board. And this concerns the resurfacing project of the, uh, Western Wall at the Founder's Park. Um, now as a, um, back up a little bit on there, that, that wall, a large portion of the wall, not the entire wall, um, is proposed to be resurfaced with a mural. Um, uh, the Parks Foundation has, um, uh, stated that they would like to contribute, um, half of the funding for that. And, um, recently we got a quote of six hundred dollars that's going to include the pressure cleaning and the prepping of the surface. So the only thing left on the wall is going to be the artist to utilize his or her talents. Now, uh, it's my understanding that, um, the artist, um, Laura on East Palomino has agreed to do this. And I don't know the aspect of whether she was, um, seeking compensation or not for do this, but I'd like to send this over to the Arts Board and have them, uh, push this a little, um, to the top of their agenda. Because with that quote of six hundred dollars, um, that's a very, very, um, reasonable price for, for bringing that wall, uh, up to a paintable, uh, condition. And, um, if, uh, Laura's, uh, interested in doing it, the, just to utilize her talents and, um, you know, the talent by the supplies, um, we can have this done, um, before fall even. Um, but i- if, if there is a compensation, then I guess it's, my thoughts are that it's probably going to go out, have to go out for a bid because, you know, everybody's gonna have to bid, make their, uh, bid known where they would be for the project. But, um, just like to ask everybody to, uh, support this, um, with, uh, sending it back to the, uh, Parks Board with the six hundred dollars and, um, that we can get this moving forward.
You get my vote.
Yep, sounds good. Sounds good.
All right, um, I just have a couple of things, so I'll be very brief. Concerning the trash pickup, uh, I, I share Newell's concerns and I've, I've raised this a number of times. And I was out there on, uh, uh, Saturday because, um, you know, I, a lot of times I see them coming, I'll go out, I'll grab the pails as soon as they're finishing come in. And after a while, you get to know the crew. Well, one guy who was on the back of the truck, uh, he's a usual guy. And the driver wasn't, uh, the usual driver. And the other guy who's normally on the other side of the truck, uh, wasn't there. So I said, is he sick? Is he got COVID? Because that's what they've told me. I don't, can't tell you how many times, how many of their, uh, their people have gotten COVID. And he said, no, no, two people called in sick and the boss called the driver in, you know, uh, to work the weekend. And he threatened to quit, but, uh, I guess he's giving him double time for it. And the guy on the back is really upset because the driver's gotta come out. It, it really slows things down. And I said, why is this happening? Because, you know, again, I thought it was COVID and their answer was, they don't know, but it seems like the bosses are making a lot more money. Now that's their comment. Um, but they, they have to be. I mean, if you've. But they they have to be. I mean, if you've only got two guys on a truck. Most of the time these days, uh something's going on that we need to look into. You know, the the these guys, they're hard workers. I feel bad for them and having to work a seven day work week uh as the driver was doing, um it's just, it's not the right way for them to handle it. It doesn't surprise me, guys calling sick regularly. Uh it's it's just a terrible condition, so. I'm gonna say it again. I I agree with Noel. If if they're not delivering, if they're not picking up on time, then uh we we're paying a premium. We need to do something about it. So I'd love to hear what we're doing about some of this uh maybe at the next council meeting. Um, one other thing that came up uh during the week, I think there was emails on it was um I guess the Country Estates Backboard, basketball backboard has gotten broken and I think uh uh they've all been broken now. The one at Country Estates looks like it was shot out. I I I think I heard somewhere or or saw somewhere that we may not replace them. I I think we need to figure out a better way to handle this. Maybe this goes to Gary's cameras idea because there's there's a family that is over at Country Estates Park every afternoon. Um I'm over there quite a bit, so I've talked to them. They're they're a nice couple. The guy was substantially injured about two years ago. He was a tree trimmer for a living. It was his business. And apparently something broke and the whole rig came down and it broke his back, it broke his legs. And this has been his recovery after he finished up with physical therapy and all the usual things. He's out there, he and his wife are out there playing basketball with the kids almost every day. It's a shame if we take these things down. I think we need to figure out a better way to protect them. Uh, you know, I I I don't know for sure if it was shot out, but I heard another one was shot out as well over at uh Sunshine Ranches. So again, I'm not sure what we can do on this to fix the problem. Uh maybe relocating them to a different spot where than at a Broad Target from uh Griffin Road, if 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 that's how it even happened. But I know they're well used. I see, used to see the one at uh Rolling Oaks used quite a bit also. I don't make it over to the Equestrian Park as much, but I I'd I'd like to see us come up with a a method to protect these things a little bit better. So the the community can continue to use it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob. Yeah, Andy, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Bob, I I got a question. Are these backboards made of glass?
I think they are Plexiglas.
Would we be able to make them out of wood?
Can 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 I jump in, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I apologize, Councilmember, for cutting you off, but that's that's exactly what we're doing right now. Is is we're revisiting what other materials are available and what would be more durable, whether it be wood or steel or something else. So December is working on that. The cost of those backboards is is reasonable. And we think we're gonna get them replaced, but after the issues we've had repeatedly with Plexiglas, uh we're gonna change that material.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alright. Alright, so I just uh have a few comments as well. Um I also, I echo uh some of the comments that Bob just made and that Noel's made earlier. That um I think it's time to uh take some action with Waste Pro. Um, we've just been talking about that and and I think we gave them some leeway understandably earlier in the year. With COVID and, but, you know, um I I think I think that excuse is worn out. You know, industries all across, all across the world, actually, I was gonna say United States, and certainly that's true. But all across the world have have come up with plans to deal with it and to continue and even grow their business in spite of COVID. So I think that that excuse is is done. And it's time for um, I I think we have arrived at the point where we need to start implementing some of those penalties. Let them know that that our patience is 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 finished. So I would definitely support that. I just wanted to follow up briefly on George Kalis's comment. Uh Keith, I I think we should, you know, take a look at at what he has uh brought to the council this evening. And see if there's anything there that uh can provide him some relief on the amount of dumping that's going on there. So, let's take a look at that. And then I wanted to, I wanted to make a a comment about um in the last couple of weeks, I've received a number of calls. I've seen uh posts on Facebook, um I've a nu- number of things going on. And 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 I guess what I want to say is that, you know, when I, when I look at Southwest Ranches. There certainly are people that agree with me. There's certain people that disagree with me. Matter of fact, I think uh I think I could state it this way, that if we looked at, you know, all the decisions I've made over the years I've been on the council. Every person in town has disagreed with me at one point or another. So, so, you know, that's that's not anything new. Um what we, I, what I, the point I want to make is this is is we can, we can disagree and we can still be respectful. We need to still be respectful. We s- we need to be um treat neighbors as neighbors and um and and I'll say that that starts with the council. That we, that we treat our residents and our comments up here carefully and respectfully all the time. But it also reflects on uh on residents and and, you know, when each one of us when we ran for office, we signed up to take uh what we knew was going to be a level of abuse. It's just, it goes with the job, you know, um I don't think uh, you know, we're not complaining about that. Uh I don't, I won't say I enjoy it, but I knew it was coming and um and it and it happens. But that doesn't make it right. And um and I would still encourage folks, you know, to be respectful. To re- respect other people's opinions and to be respectful of um when we disagree. To do it in a way that um is is respectful. We saw, I saw some comments this past week that frankly were shameful. And um so I just think we're better than that. Let me just put it that way. I think we're a small community. We know one another. We're neighbors with one another. And we're better than that. And so I would just uh encourage, you know, to think, think twice. And for us on the council to think twice as before we make comments. The last thing I wanted to do was, I just wanted to um announce, I know it's been out there on the website and and email blast went out on it, but just to kind of reinforce it that uh I'm gonna be having a call. It's gonna be a monthly call. The first one is going to be a week from Wednesday. Uh you can get the, it's a Zoom call and um you can get the information on the town website. Or uh and it's either on the front page there, you can click on it, or you can go on the calendar on uh on this coming Wednesday. And so this call is gonna be the second Wednesday of every month. And basically, um it's super casual. You don't need to pre-register for it. You uh, it's not gonna be recorded. Um I'll probably have a couple of things on my mind that I will talk about initially for the first few minutes. But then it's 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 meant for communication. It's meant, you know, I probably uh most, most weekends when my wife and I go to Publix, um I have one of these calls. And you know, in aisle five or something, you know, um because I'll run into somebody and we'll talk for, you know, twenty or thirty minutes about some issues going on in town, which is great. And so that's what this is all about, is to be, maybe that's what we should have called it, Andy, is conversation on aisle five. Because that's kind of the way I see it. And um uh so I encourage folks to 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 call in. Um if there's anything on your mind. That's what we want to talk about. Anything that's on your mind. I'll do my best to answer the, any questions that you have. And um if I don't, if I don't know the answer, um I'll go out and I'll I'll find out what that answer is, if it's possible, so. So I look forward to that. I think it's gonna be fun. I think it'll be interesting to see where our conversations take us. And um but hopefully, at the end of the day, uh it will improve communication. And um we can, you know, quell some of the rumors that are out there and reinforce some of the the truths that are out there. So I look forward to that. And uh one, one final note. Don't look for any of the rest of the council members on there, because this is a very informal meeting. Um, we uh don't want to risk any sunshine law violations. So I will be the only council member on there. I know the other council members would otherwise join. They would like to join. But in this case, it's uh, it's just best if they don't. So I've asked them not to and I appreciate that. So, but um I look forward to it. Uh hopefully, we'll, we'll have some good conversations on this coming Wednesday evening at seven o'clock. And once again, you can go onto the website to get the actual Zoom address. Alright, so with that, um legal comments. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the caveat at the end of uh your speech about uh your your private time with the residents, because yes, you're correct. Legally, we do not want that to be considered a council meeting. Of course, any council member is entitled to do their own event uh whenever they would like as well. So just wanted to put that on the record. Um other than that, no uh further legal comments. Thank you.
Alright, Andy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I'll be brief as well. Uh I heard your comments and and Councilmember, by Mr. Hartman's comments as well on the solid waste issues. I will get with Rod and we'll schedule an update presentation for you. Because I think, I think it would be helpful to kind of touch on the parameters of what the contract does allow. And and what liquidated damages may or may not apply. I think that would be very helpful. I also heard the comment about the staffing issues and running short on a truck. And and that's something we'll look in, look at as well uh to make sure uh what what provisions. We have one of the contract for minimum staffing, so we'll take a look at that as well. And the only other thing I wanted to touch on was uh vaccinations became available for everybody eighteen and up this week. Staff has been strongly encouraged to move forward in that direction. And uh I I think we're, we are moving very closer to, as I alluded to before, the playground. We're getting very closer to, much closer to bringing back public council meetings, uh opening up town hall and uh and uh becoming more accessible to the residents. So we've, I I've got a plan that uh I'm working through the very final details of that with some staff. I will get together with them again next week to continue to tweak that. We have a target date in mind. But we're watching the the council around uh around the county right now, which which are a little bit up. But I think with the vaccinations becoming more common, we're gonna start to see that drop and and it's, it's getting to be time to to reopen again. So uh I'll look forward to sharing more information with uh with all of you and with the public as as we uh set that in stone. And really, Mayor, that's, that's all I had tonight. Thank you.
Great, perfect. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. Alright, so let's uh enter the regular meeting. Russell, if you could please uh read item number eight.
Certainly, Mayor, uh the item number eight is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Approving an agreement with IMACO Inc. in the amount of $543,930.00 for the Florida Department of Environmental Protection-funded Green Meadows Drainage Improvement Project. Approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2021. Adopted budget authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Alright, thank you. Um, any discussion on this item? Is there, uh I think we have a uh the kind of a visual of this, don't we?
Russell, do you have an area for this? Uh, I don't, did somebody provide that to me today? Not aware of that.
I didn't get the memo.
Well, anyway, so, that's alright. I thought there was gonna be, but I I might have misunderstood too, so.
Oh, you didn't misunderstand. We
Okay, no worries. So this is a project. Um is is Rod on the call? Yeah, let me turn it over to Rod. This is a project I know he's been working on. We had a public comment on this probably about six or eight months ago, but uh Rod, maybe you can just give us a quick overview. This is a lot of a lot of dollars, so if we can give the residents kind of an overview of what this is about, I think that would be uh, that would be great.
Yes, Mayor, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Alright, perfect. Thank you. So, so yeah, this is a a continuation to a project we already did on fifty-fourth. And essentially, one sixty-fourth, which we bifurcated uh for for the purpose of we we found an ability to get different dollars from a different grant. And and kudos to Emily for that, because she found that funding source. So yeah, it's a continuation of that project. It's it's a long time coming. And it's essentially taking a lot of the problematic areas that we have there on one hundred and sixty-second, one hundred and sixty-third and one hundred and sixty-fourth and providing avenues for for water to go into structures and and be conveyed to that drainage canal in between one-six-four and one-six-six. So yeah, it is a very, very big project for us. This is um unfortunately, we're only able to do the base bit. We we do have plans for uh an additional alternative, but we didn't have enough money to do the additional alternative. But we will try to seek uh funding from Surtex and other avenues to try to get the different phases done. But yeah, it's a very, very important project. We have had multiple public meetings and I think overall you know, there's some, there there's some issues uh with the the placement of some of the structures, but I think overall um we got positive results from it.
Very good.
And yeah, Mayor, I'm sorry, if if you guys want me to just describe this, this sheet here.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Yeah, so the yellow uh is is essentially the completed phases that we've done. And this, this is just essentially um our initial green phase, uh a great, sorry, Green Meadows Drainage Infrastructure Improvements Plan. So um the the base the base bit for this Green Meadows project is what you see in 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 red here. So that's what we're looking forward to doing in this, with this approval tonight. Uh, the yellow there on fifty-fourth in between one hundred and sixty-third and one hundred and sixty-fourth was that bifurcation that we essentially got when we called HLMP. Uh and then the orange that you see up here is the additional alternative that we'll call Phase Two here for this project. We also have a a purple section that connects uh one hundred and sixty-second to Dykes Road, which we're working right now uh on the design of it and we're partnering with South Brower Drainage District to get that completed and hopefully here in twenty-twenty-one.
Fantastic. Yeah, this is, this is, I think this, obviously, um this is a, this whole project is a very expensive project. But it's going to address one of the biggest remaining areas of concern in the town. So um I'm pretty excited that we're seeing consistent work on this through several phases, you know, getting done by different sources of income and and uh revenue. So this is great. Jim, I think this will be great for your area over there and your residents over there. Alright, any, any comment or um questions for Rod while we have him on the call from the council? Okay, great. Thank you, Rod. Appreciate that. Um let me open this up to the public and see if there's any comments from the public.
Okay, let's see.
Uh, there are no members of the public with their hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Alright, then Russell, if you could please call the question?
Certainly, Mayor, uh Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Item number nine.
Item number nine is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Urging all members of the Florida Legislature to oppose unwarranted or overly broad preemption of municipal home rule powers. Directing a copy of this resolution to be transmitted to members of the Florida Legislature, the Florida League of Cities and any other interested parties and providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you, Russell. Um I asked that this item be put on the agenda. There seems to be a um a flurry of things coming out of Tallahassee. Where they are attempting to take away some of the choices that we historically have been able to have as a municipality. And that's what Home Rule is all about. Back in the nineteen-sixties, um the legislature passed a uh a bill that provides that the municipalities will be able to make their own choices on a wide variety of items. And um and I think we as a town, being as unique as we are and being you know, a little bit outside of what perhaps a lot of um towns throughout Florida, how they view things. We need that ability to make that on our own choice even more than other towns and communities do. So when I see these things happening, it really concerns me. To me, it's it's one one more way that we have to battle to fight to preserve our rural lifestyle, because the more that we get conformed to normal, whatever that is, cities and towns, you know what, the more we start to look like you know, the Pembroke Pines or Coral Springs, or you you name the town, you know, the standard town, that's that's definitely not who we are. So so I wanted to put this on here. I think it's it's certainly to a point, it's symbolic, but it also it gets read, it gets sent up there. And it it voices our displeasure for the way things are going and and urges those that represent us to reinforce how important Home Rule is. So so I'm glad that it's on here. I don't know if there's any other comments from the other council on this topic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You got it, David.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I've had the opportunity retired, so I get to sit in on the Broward League of Cities and the Florida League of Cities Zoom meetings. And you are correct, they are introducing bills up there that'll take away our right to look at anything, whether it be the people who come in and rent the homes on like an Airbnb or any of those situations. They're trying to make a rule where one rule covers everything, and we don't fit into that. And there's a lot of smaller communities around the state that don't fit into that. For some reason, they're trying to make it so that Tallahassee rules everything. And you're right, I think this resolution at least should let them know that we're not happy with it.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I think it may have been yesterday or the day before that I was driving to work and heard about this on the on the radio. And I was deeply, deeply troubled by the threats that legislators primarily, they were saying the senator was out of Gainesville, Gainesville area. And, you know, maybe he has a different way of thinking, what his definition of preserving a rural lifestyle is and what ours is, but his opinion was that wanted to, if somebody wanted to open up a coffee shop on any anywhere in the state, that this legislation would allow such a thing to happen, a commercial coffee shop anywhere in the state. That's something that is just lies in the face of what all those of us have moved here to cho choose this rural lifestyle. We chose to live here. We want these regulations to keep us our dark skies and keep our traffic minimized, that we don't have all kinds of cars backing up on the roads. And yeah, I was really deeply troubled to hear this. It it's proposed, it's actually in the state constitution that we have Home Rule. And for the senator to come forward and do this, and it my understanding is that it's actually passed the House. And both of our representatives have voted against it. Evan Jenny and Bartman both voted against it, but still passed the House. And it was going toward the Rules Committee earlier in the week. And I I can't say that I was so troubled by this. It it opposed, it's contradictory to preserving the rural lifestyle. This is something I very much support, and I'm glad that you put this on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, just a quick comment. When I saw this on the agenda, I looked into Home Rule, because it pops up about every other year. And last year, it was it was a hot topic. They were trying to control Airbnbs throughout the state, et cetera. And the interesting part is there were two two surveys done. One had seventy-six percent of the residents for Home Rule. And the other one further up north in Florida had ninety percent of the respondents supported Home Rule. So Tallahassee, Steve, they've got to get the message or get voted out, that this isn't something that the residents want.
Yeah, yeah, the problem is it gets chipped away like we've seen, you know, in our own town. It's shipped away a little piece here, a little piece there, a little piece there. But before you know it, it's it's a big piece that's missing. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, appreciate that feedback. Looks like we do have some public comment on this. I'll open it up to the public.
Mayor, the first speaker is Susie Elshire. Ms. Elshire, can you hear us?
I think you all answered my question. I just wanted an example of what you were talking about with Tallahassee trying to overrule us. I think you answered it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Jennifer Dactin. Is Dactin, can you hear us?
Are you there?
Yes.
I I do like a couple more examples, and maybe we could point out the fact that whatever the numbers with the bills are, we should actually do research on them ourselves. What they're actually against or what they're trying to regulate or what they're saying that our town can't regulate. If you could point that out for us somewhere or give us the exact example. And let us know. I didn't know if this was about sustainability or exactly what it was about, but I know that there's much to like support him.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jennifer. It's a little a little tough to hear you, but I think I got the point that you're looking for some examples of specifically why we're concerned about this and what's going on in Tallahassee and kind of who's who's promoting it. So Andy, Keith, maybe we can get together and put together a list of some of the ones that are concerns to us and and get that out to the residents. I think that would be awesome.
Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Marion Allen. Ms. Allen, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Ms. Allen, you muted yourself.
But it looks like you're back on mute.
How about that?
There we go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wasn't there a commercial there? Can you hear me now? This is the first time I've heard of this. Is this, has this got anything to do with the Right to Farm Act? No. Has this got anything to do with restricting more of our Right to Farm Act, what they're doing in Tallahassee?
No.
Okay, so what they're trying to do is to I I I mean, Jennifer, we need a few more examples
Yeah.
of what they're trying to do before we throw our our approval behind this. Because our concern is with anything that would interfere with our right to farm, as is stated in the Florida statute, which does protect us. And we're concerned that depending on the council people that are elected from time to time, Home Rule can be draconian. And that's what we're worried about. That's my concerns. Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, I think I think it'll clear up a lot of things if we put out there some of the issues we're concerned about. You know, I'll say one another one that was out there, and I know we kind of discussed it, went back and forth a little bit on the council was the anonymous being able to report code violations anonymously, whether that would go, you know, we I'm I'm not, I'm not going to say for or against that. But it doesn't seem right that Tallahassee should take away our choice between two between the two. That should be our choice. You know, let our residents have a debate, talk about it, decide what we want to do, and then we'll do it. Why should Tallahassee be the one to dictate to us that you no longer have that can make that choice? We're going to make it for you. It's those kinds of things that that bother me. This is not where, you know, this is not that frankly, frankly, the protections for ag and everything are are set. And so I have not seen anything that I'm aware of that would affect that in any way. But it's it's other issues. But we'll we'll get some examples out there, such as a couple of them that we've mentioned here tonight, so.
You have another speaker there.
Yeah, Russell, I think we've got one more.
Okay, it's Mr. Lasky. Mr. Lasky, can you hear us?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Hey, Jim. Yep.
Ironically, all right, I was charged with not getting an AC permit to do a change up. I have no idea when when the situation occurred, but it was all done anonymously. You all have the file on it. Andy was copied on some of my interest involving that case. And I was even sent the law from the building department that said one oh five point five, I believe in the code, that if you're doing something safer, okay, you don't need a permit. It literally said that on one of the lines. Andy, you remember that? Anyway, it was anonymous. We tried to find out who did complain. And all I got was that somebody named Snagglebush. And and the charging information, the server ID for CAP was on the on the whole deal. And I went in the cap and found out they didn't have any permit records anyway. So the whole thing was goofy to me. Why give me such information? I wonder if they ever did clean it up. But there you go. It's a civil infraction. As far as I'm concerned, it's like a traffic ticket. You have the right to be able to talk to whoever's making a civil infraction claim against you. So I probably is because that was thrown in there because it was unconstitutional. The little bit I do know about constitutionality is that one claim you have the right to to challenge your accusations. So anyway, that's my two cents. And I always heard from you guys that you guys were reactive, not proactive. The anon, the anonymous part of it allows you to play both sides of the field. So, you know, that's definitely a no-no in my mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, Mayor, we have one of the speaker, which is Fred Segal. Mr. Segal, good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening, Fred Segal, Broward County Farm Bureau. Yeah, I just wanted to comment that as far as agriculture goes, as far as I'm concerned, that's the only thing in state law that there needs to be protection for agriculture, for anything, any kinds of commercial businesses, things of that type. The municipalities or the counties should have the right to regulate what they want in their local area. You know, if you don't want sober homes, if you don't want B and Bs, if you don't want coffee shops, I definitely feel you should have that right. As long as you leave agriculture alone, I fully support anything else you're trying to do.
Thank you for that. Yeah, certainly, we have no desire to in any way restrict agriculture. All right.
Mayor, may I make a comment, please? Um, yeah, just a reference to this, what is it, Senate Bill eighty-eight or House Bill eighty-eight to the anonymous caller. Do you recall which one that is?
I think it was House Bill five eighty-eight, if I remember right. But I guess it was wrong all the time, so.
Anyway, the point I want to make to that I wanted to make right now, is a lot of talk about that, is the the only thing you're going to that bill would be doing would be shifting the calls to the council. Because a a town resident now, if they have to go on for a code complaint, if they have to list who they are, they they're going to call one of us. And, you know, and they're gonna, we're gonna be their shield, you know, and residents need to understand that. That's you know, that that happens from time to time, you know, around in the past ten years that I've been here. And and as you have, Steve and Bob. And so, you know, I don't I don't know what it's going to accomplish is what I want to really driving it. Because with the calls will just increase to the council people, you know, for loud parties and things of that nature. People don't want to go on record, and they use us as a as a shield for that, for lack of a better way of saying.
Right.
I just wanted to point that out there.
Good point. All right, seeing no other discussion on this item, Russell, if you could please call the item.
Councilmember Albritton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman. Okay, you're saying.
Sorry, yes.
Mayor Breckus.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all. Appreciate that. All right, item number ten.
Item ten is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with Broward County to receive one hundred twenty-four thousand dollars and zero cents of Surtex funding to complete the Southwest Fiftieth Street and Southwest one-eighty-second Terrace Drainage Improvements, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one town budget and providing an effective date. And I know that town financial administrator Marty Sherwood has a squibberner's error that he wants to bring up to make sure that gets included in the motion to approve this item.
Marty, you have a comment?
Yes, one item, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Marty, we can just barely hear you.
Okay, let me turn it up. How's that? Can you hear me now?
No, still can't can't just hardly hear you.
I'm unplugging.
There we go. There we go.
Very good.
Okay, better. One correction, sorry, Squibberner. Page two, the resolution sufficient funding through the Transportation Fund. It's showing as zero zero one, it should be one oh one under the revenues. The balance and equal within the Transportation Fund, page two, revenue increase, appropriated fund balance, change zero zero one to one oh one for the fifty-two thousand five oh seven. Thank you.
I make I make a motion to approve with that change.
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, any public discussion on this item?
None, Mayor, I don't see any.
Okay, Russell, if you could please call the question.
Mayor, Councilmember Albritton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Yes.
Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Breckus.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number eleven. So this is the item that was referred to earlier, and we spoke about this in our last council meeting. Basically, trying to look to see potentially adding one, possibly two new members to the comp board to try and ensure that you know, the different different areas of town, concerns of town have a voice in the comp plan board. It's such a critical board. And there's some some, I think there's some voices there that are missing. So, yeah, Gary.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll wonder if you're ready, I'll go first.
Okay, go for it. I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. By the way, the the brick that we took from last meeting to this meeting was was really valuable. I put that to good use. I went out and talked to a lot of people on both sides of the coin. And one of the things I was able to do was I spoke with Mr. Lorenzo. And by luck, and by chance, Mr. Padilla was there also. Between the two of them, they have about, or I'd say twenty-some-odd acres of nursery in in that area. And we had a really interesting conversation that went on for a little while. And I've got it, I've got it to thank Mr. Lorenzo. He's got a, he's got a really world-class operation there. It was really a nice, a nice-looking nursery. I felt like I was in Disney World for a minute there. And it wasn't staged. I could see that. He was just, he's just a good operator. But one of the things, I think there was some eye-opening for both of us. I clarified a few things that they had heard that were probably incorrect. And I gave them the backstories on them and things of that nature. And I gave them the backstories on them, things of that nature. And then, and I told them a little bit more about myself, you know, like I'm really the only guy on the council that has a degree in agriculture, things of that nature. They were kind of surprised to hear that, and I said, I'm not a horse guy, I'm a plant guy. You know, I like plants, and that's what I went to school for. But what I've noticed is it was they were really, they're really concerned about the direction that we're taking. And unfortunately, I think a lot of the concern is fueled by rumors and mistrust. And that was the, that was the big takeaway that I was getting, was that I don't believe they trust us. Okay? And I, we need to ensure that trust. And what I'd like to suggest to the other members of council is that we put both of these gentlemen on the comp advisory board for a sole purpose of this one ordinance, for however long it takes, whether it's four months, five months, six months, a year. Mr. Padilla, he is a resident, and Mr. Lorenzo is not a resident, but he is a property owner, and he has a very large property. And between the two of them, it's a multimillion dollar operation, just in their nursery stock alone, millions of dollars. And I felt real comfortable with them that they were, they're the real McCoy. They're the genuine thing. And I would fully support putting both of them on the Comprehensive Planning Board. Give them, like you said, Mayor, give them a seat at the table, you know, and a voice and an opinion. I think that will go a long way towards reassuring them that this is, you know, that we're not their enemy. Because I firmly believe that in some cases, they think that. And maybe not them, maybe others do, that we're out, and this is all based on social media nonsense, stuff that's not true. Hopefully, you'll be able to clarify a lot of it with your mayor's night out, or whatever you want to call it, whatever you want to call it.
Number station on aisle five, I think is the best.
That's it, that's it. I like Mayor's Night Out, though, it's a bad sound.
Gonna get me in trouble with my own.
Hey, I ran a bar for years. But I really think that putting both of these gentlemen on there would be beneficial for our town, for the conversation to move forward, and that everybody would get represented, represented, and, you know, have an opinion, and it would be listened to by all of us. You know, and I emphasize that I would like to make this a one-issue, a one-off situation, where it's just, once this is done, their participation would end after the finish of this ordinance, if it makes sense. So those are my thoughts.
Great, thank you, Gary. Yeah, Bob, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, I agree with Gary. I also went out and met Mr. Lorenzo, I think the day after our last council meeting. And having been in that business once upon a time, I was thoroughly impressed. I mean, the place is as spic and spann as you can get for a landscape nursery. I mean, everything is in its place. It's a family business, you know, they've got their office there, and his wife's working in there, and his children work for the business. I mean, this is the kind of thing that we're proud of in town. There's been some concerns raised. I've got a phone call yesterday, as a matter of fact, that, well, he doesn't live in town. Well, he, he doesn't live in town. He's trying to buy property in town, in the vicinity, so that he can be close to his business. But also, there's another piece that I'm not sure if everybody's aware of. George Lorenzo was part of the volunteer fire department for nine years. He worked his way up from being a fireman to a captain. And, I mean, that's commitment to our town right there. I had a long conversation with him, I think we were together for about an hour and a half. And he's the real McCoy. He stands up for the neighborhood, he's tried to fix some things over in Griffin 345 for the benefit of the community. He's not just a property owner, I look at him as an asset to the community. And I agree with Gary, to put him on, and I think you were referring to Daniel Padilla as well, makes sense to put both these guys on. If they want to stay afterward, we can certainly, you know, put them on the board next year, or, you know, take some early action. But I think for the benefit of the landscape, the, excuse me, the nursery ordinance, these guys would both be very valuable to the process.
Great, thank you, Bob. Yeah, David.
Before I go on, Bob, you had said that you support this. Is that a second for the motion that you're making?
I thought I seconded it before.
Alright, I just heard you supported it.
I don't think there was a motion yet on the floor.
There hasn't been a motion yet.
David, you want to make that motion?
Let's, how about, how about if we talk it over first before?
Yeah, sounds great.
Let's talk it over.
That's what I was doing, you know, just giving my opinion.
Yes, Sunday, I went out and spoke with Mr. Lorenzo and Mr. Padilla. And I can say I was very impressed with Mr. Lorenzo's operation. And I drove out to Mr. Padilla's operation as well. Very, very well-run nurseries that they sell wholesale. And I did learn about their concerns, their mistrust of the council. And I do support the issue with having those members, those individuals within our community on there. You know, I saw the horses, the donkeys, the sheeps and goats that Mr. Lorenzo had. And he mentioned that he, in addition, just being with the volunteer fire department, he would just give his time coming out to the various events, where he was, had no obligation to come. He was very doing as a volunteer, with the volunteer fire department, and he was just giving his time, and that really touched me. And then, Mr. Padilla telling, I believe he's a second generation owning his nursery as well. And I think those individuals reflect the rural lifestyle.
Yep, yep, thank you, David. Thank you. Jim, any thoughts on that? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, sir. After the last meeting, I went out and I also met with George and Daniel. But then I took it upon myself to go around to three, four other ag community people that sold to the public. Some were strictly selling wholesale, and some was a blend of both, wholesale and a little bit of commercial. And after speaking to them, and not telling any of them that I had spoke to someone before, or somebody else in the community, I was just trying to get their input. Then I met a second time with George and with Daniel. And after the second trip, I found out that each one of those other people that I had spoke to had called them to tell them that I was at their place, asking them about their input for the comp board. So those two people are very well-respected. I had my reservations about George simply because he wasn't a resident, and I know our boards are made up of residents. But the proposal that Gary just put on to put both Daniel and George on the board is absolutely a great proposal. I think both of them would be a very valuable asset to the board. So, you know, I would like to, you know, support that. Thank you.
Great, great, great. I just want to say, I really appreciate the council taking the time to go out and meet with George and Daniel. That's just awesome, you guys to take the time to do that, realize how important this is, and take your time to do that, that's, I just really appreciate that. I want to, yeah, go ahead, Gary.
I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt, Mayor, but I do want to mention that I did speak to other people, and I'm not going to name them right now, that were on the other side of the coin, and they were, they had those initial concerns about, you know, a non-resident, you know, on the board. And I assured them, based on what I saw, that, you know, the millions of dollars that these gentlemen have tied up in their resources and their business, you know, it goes way beyond the homeownership. I mean, they've got, they've got skin in the game, for lack of a better way of saying it. I mean, it's a solid, it's a solid, solid business. This is fly-by-night, by any stretch of the imagination. And I tried to reassure, I tried reassuring some other people who didn't want to be named or anything like that. So I just want to mention that, that I did talk to people on the flip side of that coin.
Yeah, yeah, important point, thank you. So I certainly appreciate and agree with the recommendations that are made. I do have a couple of things that I would like to tweak on it. I think part of this, certainly the main reason for this, is to get the input on the nursery ordinance, and to make sure that gets done right, and everybody is comfortable with it. But I think there's another element of it that, for too long, this group has not had a seat at the table. And so I think to set this up in a way that would be kind of a one-off, where they're on the board for this one topic, and then they're off, I'm not comfortable with that. I think that they should be on the board, and what I would say is this, I would definitely support them both being on the board. I think that's amazing, I hadn't thought of putting both on there. I think that's a great recommendation. And what I would say is, having them both on there through the end of the year, and then going forward next year, you know, they can, they can choose, frankly, which one they feel most comfortable being on there. I think, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I kind of think that by December, they both may be residents of our town. So we'll have a good, you know, good choice there. But I don't, I don't want to go back, I don't want to go back to a comp board that doesn't have the voice of ag on there. I don't think that's right, I don't think that's where we want to go to. So I would say, let's just, let's just do this kind of an exception for both through the end of the year, and then next year, let's make sure we've got continually have a voice of ag on there. But, but, you know, at that point, choose one to go forward. The other thing that, as I talk to residents, and I've talked to a number of residents on both sides of the coin as well, since the last time we got together a couple of weeks ago, the other thing that came up a number of times was having someone from the equestrian community also on the comp board, because we do have a lot of issues that are equestrian-oriented. And we don't really have someone that, that, you know, is there to support that group. So I know that's kind of a new thing, and maybe we're not prepared to talk about individual names here. But I think that I would like to add someone from the equestrian community onto this board as well, maybe, maybe next meeting, we can talk about that. But for this meeting, I, you know, Gary, I like your, I like your proposal with that one tweak.
I have no problem at all, it's probably going to take that long, anyway. But yeah, to the, you know, let it go until the board sunsets, and then we reappoint. We can have those discussions as you suggested. They sound fine to me, it's workable. Do you need a motion, Mayor?
I think we do, yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we add these two gentlemen to the board through the rest of the year. And.
And I think in that recommendation, you also need to say that we're going to increase the size of the board, because I think that's.
Oh, okay, yeah, we're going to increase the size of the board. I believe it's seven, and now it's going to go to nine. I'm correct on that? And if somebody, if so, if I'm not, please, somebody correct me on that. Gentlemen, thank you, Bob.
Great, awesome. Alright. So I see we have some public comment on this item, I'm going to open up the item to the public, please.
Hey, Mayor, we have a couple of speakers. The first speaker is Doug McKay. Okay, can you hear us?
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me?
Here we go, yep. We can, thank you.
Doug McKay, 4851 Southwest 130th Ave, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Steve, I want to thank you for, last meeting, for spearheading getting this done. That was a huge deal. When George Lorenzo was getting started out there, he had a few hurdles to go over. And myself, Mary Gay, a couple of us were there to help him out and get through it. And so we were there in the beginning of it. I want to say that a couple of comments at the last meeting were made that I'm an instigator behind all this, and all that is other crap. I'm not behind any of this, gentlemen. People out there are doing their own thing, and just call and ask me, or ask for my assistance or help. So I'm not reaching out or getting involved and have anything to do with anything that's uprising. So those accusations Bob Hartman made last time were way off base. So anyhow, but Steve, Council, I'm glad you guys made the right decision here. I don't think you'll regret it, and good luck moving forward.
Great, thank you, Doug. I'd also like to reinforce what Doug was just mentioning, that when I spoke to George, he had nothing but great things to say about Doug, and how he had, as mayor, he had really helped him get over some difficult hurdles and get things squared away out there. So appreciate what you did there.
Always there to help the residents, as you guys know.
Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is, I believe it's Noel Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Hello, hello. This is going to take a few minutes, because I have quite a few things to say about what was said this evening so far. And I would like to start with my resume. Number one, I've been a resident here of over 40 years. Number two, I've raised horses, and I, for 35 years, was a member of the Broward County Fair and the Large Animal and Agriculture Tents, and a supervisor in that area. I also raised chickens for show, and exhibited them all over the country. Now, if that's not agriculture, then nothing is. Because also, for the last three generations of my family, we have been raising brimiliates, and genetically modifying them through selective breeding for commercial use. Now, you're saying that no one has, anyone on the board has any agricultural experience? And no one has equestrian experience? We raised horses, we had horses, and my wife is the founder of the Fun Horse Show. I am responsible for putting two equestrian bridges across the canal out west here, when they build the water area, which is supposed to start in two years. The first bridges the town has across the canals for equestrian use. So saying that no one is thinking about the equestrian community in this town really raises the hair on the back of my head, and makes it impossible for me to be silent about that. Having said that, as my resume, as to the agricultural community, the equestrian community, what I also have studied is how we lose our ability to be what we are right now. And one of the ways is to start allowing those that do not have any skin in the game, resident-wise, to become part of the boards. I have seen the boards deteriorate where everybody is out of town. It is a slippery slope you're starting, and it should only be residents. Number two, the two individuals that you're talking about are agriculturally exempt. This nursery ordinance, landscape ordinance, has nothing to do with them, nothing at all. Because they are agriculturally exempt by state law, and we can't touch them with this ordinance. This is for those that are making errors in their way to correct those things. And that's exactly what it's for. Why would we put agriculturally exempt people on the board that mistakenly believe we're trying to take away their ag-exempt status when we're not? And they don't live here, so there is no financial effort for them, because they don't have any skin in the game by living here. They may be wonderful people, I don't know anything about them. But at the same time, they need to be residents of this town, and they need to be agricultural people that are not ag-exempt. And they exist because I'm one of them, and I'm on the board. So therefore, I request that this not be put on as a person who is not a resident of this town, because all of the. Because all of the boards should be manned by residents of this town. Because it's a very slippery slope. Because one gets on, then another one wants on, and another one wants on. And before you know it, they're saying everything that happens and the council that goes along with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Noel.
Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Marion Allen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, I have to go after his speech. Oh my. Steve, thank you so much for bringing up the fact that we do need more ag. Horse farm related, you know, people raise chickens, goats, horses and nursery. I don't think we have enough of them because that's basically what our town is. And having just one person on there doesn't really give enough support for our, our lifestyle. I have no problem with having those two nursery people on, only because they do have a lot of skin in the game. And also, they've been selected on an individual basis. You didn't select them just because you wanted to put someone on. You carefully investigated their background, their dedication to our community, the years of service. I think that is enough of a recommendation that they could and should be considered for the position. I would like to see a few more horse people on the board. Some of the most egregious problems that caused the equestrian community to become enraged. Okay, I'm going to say enraged, was that fire tax on barns? Who the heck came up with that? I'd like to see them off the board or fired, run out of the town for bringing that up. And this is the danger we have when you don't have enough representation of people that have horses, barns, boarding. You're going to put people out of business with that tax. And we surely don't want any more creative taxes. We don't want any more behind the scenes deals where all of a sudden these things come up and then we have to, as a community, get all upset and come out and start yelling. We don't want that. And we always feel like there's something going to come up behind our backs. Now you have us scared. Okay, and a lot of the most egregious things that happened was with the last council. I'm not going to name names. But I'm very happy with Steve and the new people with your new goal, which is to get more input from the people, honest conversations with people. Because many residents feel intimidated and they were persecuted for speaking up. We don't want to see that either. This town is for their residents, by their residents, and we're going to keep it that way. And it looks like this new board is directly in line with our desires. I'm sorry if I'm not as verbally perfect as, but I think you understand what I'm saying from the heart, okay? And thank you so much. I agree that those two nursery guys could be and should be on because they are very well researched. And I think they have their hearts in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Jennifer Dactin. Stack, can you hear us?
Are you there?
Yes.
Not sure if you can hear me or not. I'm actually driving, so I'm in the truck talking. Thing. But I'm willing to volunteer third generation out here. We have Aaronwood sport horses, we breed and collect stallions, breed mares. We also have a small goat dairy. We do have ag. I think the two gentlemen you guys are speaking about are also awesome ideas. And to correct Noel, I'm pretty sure Daniel's been out here since early nineties. So he is a resident. But I definitely think we need more representation. We, you know, maybe even, and I've brought this up before, a couple of months and a couple of years ago. You know, maybe we should have a ag board or some sort of board that's represented by South West Ranches. So we can really come up with, you know, helping people do things the proper way. You know, if you don't want the fake ag and problems, maybe we could have a group of us that are trying to do it the right way and trying to protect everything that's going on. But if you need help, I'm here. I'm willing to sit in, whatever I can do. So. Out of mind.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Jen.
Okay, Mayor, let's see. Next speaker is George Morris. George, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Yeah, good evening, everybody. But it knows me, George Morris. I just wanted to say really quick. I've been on the comp board for twelve years, maybe more. And with regards to this decision, I'm neither for or against it. I just want to support the council. Wouldn't have a problem with it either way. But I would like to say for the record. I've had an agricultural business. I have a nursery. I've had it before the town was a town. I continue to grow and sell plants. I also have sheep, goats, chickens and cows on curtains. You know, different properties I own throughout the town. Doesn't make me special. It's just what I love to do. So, you know, I want you guys to know that I do represent ag. I live it, I breathe it, and I deal with it every single day. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, George.
Mayor, the next speaker is George Kales.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have to say that I'm really, I really feel slighted with all the attention that Mr. Lorenzo and Mr. Perdi are getting. And if they are acquainted to the board, I would invite them to come down my driveway and see what an abortion I have next door to me. I'm sure that they have twenty acres and I'm sure it looks beautiful. But look at the attention that they're getting. And I still have a dump next door to me. Unscrupulous. I, I don't know where to go with this, quite frankly, but I thought I'd give you my two cents. And Steve, yes, you've been out to see. And Dave, you haven't had any comment for a long time, but you have come, come out to see me. But maybe Mr. Lorenzo, Mr. Perdi can come out and look at what's going on next door to me. And maybe they have something to say about ag exemption. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kales.
Yeah.
And Mayor, the last speaker is Daniel Padilla. Mr. Padilla, can you hear us? Mr. Padilla, can you hear us? Maybe we'll go back to him, Mayor. Would you like me to go to the next speaker?
Yeah, yeah, let's go to the next one. Dan, you, you can try back here after a couple more speakers, maybe work it out.
Okay, the next speaker would be George Lorenzo. Mr. Lorenzo, can you hear us?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes. Good, George.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the council for giving us the opportunity, me and Daniel. And while I know it's controversial with, with some people, I can assure you guys that me and Daniel both have the, the skin in the game that Noel Hollingsworth was talking about. I also understand there's a lot of people that aren't doing the right thing. And, you know, it's a tough situation. You know, when I've talked to all of you, I understand it's a hard job. It's, it's a hard thing to come to terms with when someone like the previous speaker was saying that he's got an abortion next to his house. It's unfortunate, it's unfair. You know, we're trying to be an example to the other nurseries that are out here and maybe are doing things incorrectly. We would love to be a voice for the ag community, but we also would like to be an example for the ag community. And so even get to a point where we can get these people that maybe don't have the recourse or the idea or the notion of what to do. Maybe give them the insight. In a professional and a nice way. We don't have to attack people. South West Ranches is, is a farm area. It's supposed to be ag, it's supposed to be rural. And, and I think that we, we're losing sometimes touch with that. Farms are beautiful. It's what makes us rural. It's what gives us space. And I think all of you have your heart in the right place as well in this council. I've spoken to all of you individually. There is a lot of rumors. There's a lot of things going on. There's a lot of tension in the town. There's a lot of bad blood. There's a lot of animosity. And I think me and Daniel and, and a few more of us want to get rid of the animosity. We want to come to terms with all of you, unite and also unite the residents that are also aggravated because someone next to them is doing the wrong thing. You know, we want to make it right, but we need the opportunity. We need the support. We need the backup. And I appreciate what you guys as council members are doing to giving us the chance to have the opportunity to actually do that. I promise you on my end, and I am going to speak for Daniel because he wasn't able to. On our end, you definitely have our support and we will work with you guys. And definitely we will have a voice for, for our end as well, ag, whether it's equestrian or nurseries or farms, individual farms, whatever it may be. We're, we're for ag one hundred percent. So again, thank you for your time and, and thank you for the support.
Thank you, George. And I just want to say a comment, we'll, we'll go more public comment. Normally I don't, would not interrupt public comment, but I do want to make a comment along those lines. One of the things when I sat down with George two, three weeks ago and we talked for a while about a number of things, one of the things that really impressed me and, and Daniel was there as well and he echoed the same thing, so it's true of both of them. Is that what, what George just said there is that it's not just about his property or, you know, protecting his rights. It's about, you know, building this communication and helping those that are not doing it right. That are, you know, creating situations that give ag. You know, I don't want to say a bad name, but takes away from what ag should be. And I didn't even ask George. George volunteered, just like he did just a minute ago to, hey, you know, he'd be willing to go out there and help. And, and George Kales, just for your, this was one of the reasons why I was so excited about George Lorenzo getting on the board because I really felt like he, he could possibly, he and Dan could possibly be a bridge to resolving some of the issues that you're having. So that was, that was in the back of my mind. And, and frankly, it's one of the things that just made me realize how, you know, the opportunity we have in front of us to, to build some bridges, to get this communicate and to get, you know, a voice at the table for all folks and really move together in one direction as a town. And so George, Dan, I'm just thrilled that you guys, after what you've heard over the last couple of weeks that you're still willing to do this and you all are great. So. All right, I apologize for jumping in the middle there, but I just wanted to say a couple of words.
Okay, Mayor, the final speaker appears to be Michelle McBride. Ms. McBride, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Michelle.
Hi, um, well, I just want to thank all of you because what I'm hearing is just so refreshing to listen to things that are going on in social media and people that are upset. And just to see you, Steve, and the rest of the council trying to reach out and communicate. And it, it's just really refreshing and I just have to say thank you to everyone. This means a lot. I don't know Lorenzo, but I've listened to him and he sounds very knowledgeable. And I'm just so happy that you are considering him seriously to be an important part for this board and I do think it's needed. I appreciate you bringing in the need for more voices in the equestrian community because you guys know this is what I do. And I appreciate Noel's contribution through the years. It's important that we stay current with everything that we need. And I appreciate Jennifer volunteering to be on this board. That's a great idea. Jennifer is a wonderful person and she too is very knowledgeable. But I just want to say that when you talk about, you know, people not having skin in the game, it's important just to offer a different perspective. I know that like for me personally, I don't have a million dollar business here. And I haven't volunteered on the fire department and whatnot. But we, I feel that I have made personally contributions to the community. I mean, staying with people's horses when they're colicky, taking in animals that are running down the street. I, I think that we have to be careful when we say have skin in the game or an asset to the community. Because I, I think I have been an asset to, to some members of this community. So we just have to be careful how we word these things. Because of course, if there's someone better suited to be on the board, that's wonderful. I was considering volunteering if nobody else was stepping up, but I just wanted to offer that perspective for you all to consider. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Michelle.
Okay, Mayor, Daniel Perdi, I believe is, is on. Let me see if we can get him to speak. Mr. Perdi, can you hear us?
Yeah, hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, there we go.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, everybody. I want to say thank you. I'm really excited. I, I, I think we're going to get something done. Oh, well, first of all, I want to say I'm, I'm a second generation. We've been living out here since nineteen ninety six. My daughters are third generation. I'm, I'm raising my daughters here. We have the nursery, we have chickens. We get along with our neighbors. We've been here for some time. I think it shows that we're good neighbors. We want to create the bond, create the, the peace, do things right. Have a voice for ag, have a voice for the people with horses, people, the chickens, all kinds of ag. But we, we are, I'm happy and I'm very happy. I'm nervous, as you can tell, because I'm just excited of, of, of what we're going to be able to get done. And, and, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to, to have our voice heard. We're going to express it. And we're going to get it done. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Dana. Really appreciate it.
Okay, Mayor, we have no other public speakers.
All right, great. Appreciate all that feedback from the residents. You know, that's, that's what it's about, is getting everybody at the table, hearing all the different views. We're not always going to agree on everything, but it's important everybody's heard and that we come to a consensus that's best for the community as a whole. So thank you for that. All right, I think with that, so we have a motion in a second on the table. Russell, if you could please call the question.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Al Britton. Yes, Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Mr. Pizenski.
Yes.
Mr. Hartman.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all for that. All right, number twelve, the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Awesome. Any corrections or adjustments to the minutes? Seeing none, Russell, if you could please call the question.
Councilmember Al Britton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pizenski.
Yes.
Mr. Hartman.
Yes.
Mr. Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and then some housekeeping on item number thirteen, some appointments.
So make a motion that we keep Councilman Al Britton.
I hear that he is doing a stellar job.
I heard it's outstanding.
Second that.
It's getting a little deep now.
Quick. I'm afraid this may be a four to one vote. I don't know.
All the question, quick.
They're also asking for a alternate and second alternate for the appointment to this.
I like, I like Rose, his wife.
Be careful what you ask for.
Unfortunately. Really learned a lot. I've enjoyed it. There's a lot of very, very smart people there that I can learn a lot from. And I, I would gladly accept the, the appointment.
Thank you, Jim. It really, you know, we joke about it, but it really is important. So we appreciate the service on that.
As Russell mentioned, any motion on this one has to have a first alternate and a second alternate as well.
Okay, well, I think Gary, he volunteered for the first alternate, if I heard him right.
No, I thought I was second. Heard Bob or David wanted to be first alternate.
I'm the MPO rep, so I got, I got enough going on there.
David.
David, I think the pressure's building, buddy.
Be really tough with a full-time gig.
I'm going to recommend Gary also. He's retired. He has the time. So I'm going to recommend Gary also. He's retired. He has the time, so that.
Gary's no guy. He's already signed up. We need a third person.
Oh, you need a third, a second. Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Y'all have to fight over that one.
You can't tell, but I'm looking right at David.
Sorry, guys, I'm already there. I can't split myself.
David, second alternate ain't bad.
Second alternate.
Oh, took one for the team. Thank you, David. All right, I think I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Bob. All right, any discussion on this item? Any public discussion on this item?
None, Mayor. Can I ask again, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Gary. And Bob's second.
Yeah, got the second, right. I just didn't have the first. Thank you. Like me to take a roll?
Just call the question. Yes, please.
Sure. Uh, Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
No.
Okay, I'll report that as a note. Councilmember Kazinsky?
Yes.
It's Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Breakers.
Now, I'll say it. Absolutely.
We have a four to one vote, Mayor.
Reach it out. All right, all right. I think I have one more thing for Gary to do and we're good.
Absolutely. Motion to adjourn.